At six oh five P M. Please stand to vote for the leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody, at this time I need a motion.
Member Baranski?
Present.
Member Blankey?
Present.
Member Carnegie? Member Culka? Member Shornak?
Here.
Member Winawicki?
Present.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Kelly, I'm here too.
Thank you.
I made a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, unless somebody has to make questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if anyone else is.
Your mic isn't working, Mike. Your microphone is not working.
My mic is not working?
No, I hear you.
That's test. Okay, sorry about that. We have a motion, a second for the agenda as submitted. Any questions on the motion? Can you need a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Member Baranski?
Yes.
Member Blankey?
Yes.
Member Carnegie?
Yes.
Member Culka?
No.
No?
Okay. No.
Okay. Member Lessig?
Yes.
Member Shornak?
Yes.
And Member Winawicki?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item five, request for council action, would be only one item tonight. Item A is consideration of Hidden Pines senior housing balcony and door replacement bids. I don't know who wants to take the lead on this at this time, it would be Nick or Mike, but if, I see we sounded kind of a lot of information, good information, and if you wanted to go over that and answer all the questions council has, that would be great.
Yeah, I guess I can start. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you again for considering this item before you on such short notice. We listened to the questions that were brought up a few weeks ago and provided as much additional information as we could to support bringing this bid to you at this time for consideration.
And Mike, just for the record, we had to bring it up this time because the bids would not be honored after that date.
Correct, yeah, we took bids, I believe it was May twenty eighth, and there was a sixty day hold on the bid, which is a typical amount of time. And with the amount of material that was already on the June agenda, we pushed it to July, and since it was tabled at that meeting, we're back here today. The low bidder had indicated to us that they would not be willing to extend their bid beyond the sixty days, so.
Okay.
We're here again before you for consideration of the bid for B N S contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Balconies and door bid. And along with me today is also Scott Kelly from Anderson, Exton, Westrick. He's our senior project architect on the project to answer any technical questions related to the drawings or specifications that are a little bit beyond my scope. But again, we tried to provide as much backup information as we could, listening to the questions that had been posed two weeks ago and taken into consideration. The material that we presented at the January council meeting, and I believe we had provided some supplemental information, some follow-up specifically related to that January meeting, and an email to Mr. O'Neil that he had distributed to everybody as part of the agenda packet, so. I believe at that, at that time, we had talked about a slightly different schedule, trying to do the project over three budget years in two construction seasons. But due to the amount of repairs that were done on the facility over the last budget year, we had to kind of adjust that schedule. By the time we went out to bid, just to make sure that we weren't spending more than was available in the, in the, in the account. So what we've got is a project that comes in, I think we had said twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars per, per unit, which would have put us at five hundred and forty thousand dollars, and before you, we have a little bit of five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and some change, which puts us right in that ballpark. And again, this will be done over three calendar years, four budget years. And I believe the information that Mr. Walters has provided in terms of fund balance shows that we've got money in the budget for the first phase of this to be done this year, and then the projections are that money would be available in the subsequent years for phase two and three.
My, my only question at this time is, the pricing that they gave us for phase one, two, and three through D N S, those are locked in, and they will stay that price no matter what, correct?
As long as the scope doesn't change, the, the price would remain the same.
And we're the only ones that could change the scope, or a contingency, if you found something wrong, would that change the scope?
Yeah, if there was a case where-
It would change. Go ahead, Scott.
If there was a case where we began the project and we started to, we found a condition that was something we didn't see before, like some extra rotted beams or something like that, that would add to the scope of the work, but other than that, we don't think that's going to happen. Pretty confident that what we see and what we're going to replace this couple, we've already given you, is what we're going to be doing.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other council members at this time, please? Mayor Protem Winawicki?
So, I, I don't want to beat this, this horse to death, but we're being asked to make a decision on the packet that was, that was sent to us. The U S companies bid, the entire bid was totally ill, I couldn't read anything on it, there was nothing on it except garble. And, and, and I'm, I'm still not happy with the way that the bid process was handled. It seems to me like we did the bid process the same old way that we always done it, and we're, and we've continued to do it that way. We had general contractors bidding on what is a specialty item. When you look at doors and windows, those are specialty items. We've got Graham, who seems to check out. You've got U S companies that, that we couldn't even read the bid, and the one that you're recommending seemed to be qualified too. One of the bidders was Midwest Carpet Cleaning and Restoration, and I Googled their, their website, and I didn't see any construction experience or even specialty experience of, of a project of this nature. So, I'm, I'm just not, just not happy with that, along with, and I, I think I keep saying this, when we say we're specifying Pella window this, or equal, that or equal always comes back to bite someone, and I don't want it to be the city of Frazier. So, so, so those are my concerns with this whole thing, is that we don't have a clear, concise product, what are we buying, what are we getting? We don't know, because it says or equal. And as I look at the bid package, I look at it as two general contractors with no specialty experience, or no specialty background in doing doors and windows. I understand the whole balcony racing and everything, but that, that, you know, that, that's something, that's, that's a different part of the scope, and you would need either a general contractor or a carpenter, somebody who's, who's specializing in that. So I understand the whole, you know, we need to make a decision tonight because the bids won't be accepted after, after tonight. I just wanted to voice my, my displeasure with this whole bid process. You know, we started many months ago, saying that we can no longer continue to do the things the way that we've always done them. And I looked at, at how, you know, and, and Mike, this is a question for Mike Biggirah, this is specific for you, how was it advertised? How, how was, how were these, these contractors invited to bid on this?
Yeah, so we, we published the ad on Bidnet, which was formerly called Mittin, which is the city's procurement process, it's one of the largest platforms for municipalities to bid at the state. We selected categories, N A I C S categories, that met the scope of the project. And as soon as we posted it, an email was sent out to, I believe, three hundred and twenty-six vendors throughout the state of Michigan, and beyond, I should say across the country. They were instantly notified that this bid opportunity was available. And I believe the number that actually downloaded plans and specifications was thirty-two, and then five ended up submitting bids for it, so it, it did get a, a large presence. And then I know, as typically, we've got a number of contractors that we work with on a regular basis, and if we don't see them on the plan holders list, we reach out and, and say, hey, you know, this project is a, an opportunity that's out there. Have you guys seen it, are you interested, you know, here's where you can get the plans and specs.
Did you reach out to any of those?
We did, yes.
I was going to say, how do we, David, sort of questions, how do you make people bid on a project if they don't want to?
It's not making people bid on a project they don't want to, that's, that, that wasn't part of the thought process here, the thought process was, this was, this is more of a specialty type thing. And, in, in, in my line of work, when I reach out to, when I have to get something like, you know, bid out like this, I consider that it's a specialty thing, and I focus on and solicit bids from, from the specialty type contractors. I don't, I don't go to Mittin, I don't go to processes that a lot of people, yeah, they may have gotten it, but, and thirty-two may have looked at it and downloaded the stuff, but you know, i- if, if I want to buy a Ford product, I'm going to a Ford dealer. If, if I want a Pella window, I'm going to buy from a Pella, you know, window person, I'm not, I'm not going to be out there looking for a general contractor to say, hey, I'm, I'm interested in this. Because now you've got, you, you just have another whole layer, another whole process when you're, when you're skipping, or, or not getting, or not looking for the specialty type trades that do those things. You know, if you're going to put a parking lot in, you go to an asphalt company, you don't, you, you don't just go to a general contractor and say, hey, Jim, you know, can you do, can you do asphalt? You know, it's just, I, I just have, again, just a whole just not it just doesn't work for me. I, I've never bid like that, I've never put projects out there to, to general contractors for a specialty field.
Anybody else? Councilman Baranski?
I just have a question about the math and the money, the question I had had last time, I want to make sure that if we approve this contract, although we don't anticipate any other repairs this year, I want to make sure there's still enough left in case something comes up. So, and I know there were a flurry of emails that went around, and so I apologize, because I just didn't have a chance to really solidify it. How much did we, I know what we have budgeted, which was, I think, Councilmember Lessig did a great job of pointing out, I think it was two eighty-five. Did we carry over additional money that's in the, the fund balance? In addition to that two eighty-five? Yes.
Go ahead, John.
Sir Walters? Yep.
Yeah, the, the, the bonds were paid off in fiscal nineteen, so that was about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So now it's really the expenses, the depreciation on the, on the building right now, so there is about three hundred and forty thousand dollars of the fund balance is unrestricted, so it can be used for anything. And the rest of the fund balance is tied up in the building.
Okay, and is that three hundred and forty thousand include the two eighty-five or not? That is budgeted for these repairs?
No, that's over and be-
Awesome, okay, I have no other questions, thank you.
Man, I know this process can be different, and we can look at it different ways, I only made sure that we got on the agenda, because if sometimes we delay these things, it ends up costing us a lot more money in the long run. Just thought it was important that council look at it again and make a decision, they don't have to, if they want to, but it's, it's obviously up to us, so. Mr. Mayor? Councilman Culka?
Thank you, um, I just have a little bit of feedback, and just, the reason that I'm, I'm bringing myself is because I think, you know, one of the problems we're having is with the way information sometimes is being presented. I feel like a lot of times, it's like a shell game, and it, it shouldn't be like that, it really should be very cut and dry, really easy to read, you know, find the information we're looking for. And, you know, it's frustrating as a council for us to have to ask questions that really should be, they're very basic, and very, and, and should be answered, and I, I don't understand why there's, I, I feel like that there's this disconnect a lot, and I, I don't, I don't understand that. I know that at the last meeting, I had specifically asked for a breakdown of the budget, and so we can figure out what's in there right now, what our projected revenue is for this year, what our projected expenditures are for this year, and where this falls into that, and will we have enough money at the end, or what that money would be, what the amount would be, and will that be enough if we do go, go down this road? So what we get is, I get, I get this, and I'm supposed to figure out that information from this document, and I, I don't, I, I, I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to say no. Because really, it's not easy to put together, it's not hard to put together a little budget sheet that says, here's how we're having the fund balance right now that's unrestricted, here's our anticipated revenue, here's the cost of all the anticipated expenditures for the year, here's the cost of the capital improvement, this is what it will be left for emergencies and incidentals, or to roll into next year after we pay for that. And then the recommendation, this is going to be enough money. I think it's a good, I think it's a, it's, there's enough money in there for us to be able to afford this expenditure, and go forward, and still have enough money to cover our bases for the year. It's that easy. So, a- and then, and then on top of that, you know, Patrice asks a question about what's in there, and she gets an answer that indicates that there's going to be three hundred and forty thousand dollars, which represents the unrestricted fund balance. And then Mr. Lessig puts together his own spreadsheet, which says there's two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in there. If you just, to put it, hold on. If we're just going to put it in a budget sheet that indicates the, all the question, answers to those questions that I asked last two weeks ago, it would be pretty straightforward. In other words, it's a shell game, it's like, we're getting part of an information, we're getting some information here, and thank you, Mr. Lessig, for doing this, I mean, I'm not knocking you, I, I appreciate this very much so, but it's, this isn't what we should be doing. This isn't our, our responsibility as council to go through and do this. Our responsibility as council is to make sure, is this a good, sound economic decision? And when we can't figure out basic information, that's why we get frustrated. It is not our job as council to do, to go through and find the little, all the little nuances on the spreadsheet that we're getting, and figure it out ourselves. I, you know, and, and I'm just frustrated, I'm really, really frustrated, and, and every time it happens, I get more and more frustrated. Yes, go ahead.
Well taken.
I just want to say that I'm available, if there's any specific questions, I'm available via call, or, you know, just go ahead and ask. I was just asked to present financial information, period, and that was it, so, that's the trial balance, and I put a couple paragraphs to indicate what's restricted, what's unrestricted, so I didn't know what anybody was looking for. I apologize, but nobody reached out and asked me any questions.
I, I don't, I mean, no, I, I just want to say that, I mean, this, if you, if you watch the, the meeting, this isn't what I asked for, I don't think this is what anybody asked for. So-
I believe that I just, because I didn't know if anyone followed up with John, I sent him an email while I was traveling that, you know, to let him know that council was looking at least for some budgetary numbers about what was in the file, and that's what I did, but apparently all the questions that were asked in the meeting didn't get forwarded to him. Who's next? Councilman, Councilman Shornak was next.
No, I think Miss Blankey was.
Okay, go ahead, Kelly.
I don't care, thanks, Patrice. My issue isn't so much with the budgetary, as, as we said, we, you know, I agree with what everyone's saying, but I'm going to go back to, because I, I made this statement, construction has never been a career I've been in. So when, uh, Mayor Protem Winawicki mentions Pella windows, I know what those are, I know they're a high quality. And when I went through the two hundred and thirty-one pages of information that was sent to us, in comparison to the two original, you know, when I first opened it, I was kind of thrilled, but again, if you really, really go through it, there was a lot of garble, there was a lot of non-relevant information. I may have missed it, but I didn't see any specs, so now this is the second time Mr. Winawicki has mentioned Pella windows. And here's my concern about this whole project, these seniors have waited a long, long time. Some of us were here when that building went up, with the inferior products used. These seniors have been very, very patient, and I just want to do it right. So that's my true sense, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shornak?
Thank you, um, so, here, here's my consent for this, because I don't want to belabor this, we belabor everything, I'm not going to do that this time, I'm just going to simply state, um, the major two concerns we had, when Nick brought this forth to us, there was two major concerns. Mr. Winawicki expressed his concerns about not getting the specific doors and windows. That was the main thing, and the second one was the fund balance minus the asset, which Mr. Walters knows, and he did answer my question, he did send an email, I copied all of council on it, of what I want to know, what the asset, what the fund balance was minus the asset, which he answered. And he answered that a couple days ago, so, the two, one question was answered, and I do understand, Miss Culka's, I'm concerned, Mr. Lessig sent one set of numbers, and Mr. Walters sent another, so, you know, that I, I'm going to defer to Mr. Walters' numbers, because, and, and no offense to, to Mr. Lessig at all, because I know he's on top of that, but Mr. Walters has the everyday numbers, because he's in the B S N A, so I'm going to go with his numbers. But I think the fundamental last question everybody wants to know, besides, I do agree with Mr. Winawicki's objections about how things are presented, they're kind of all over the place, so if Nick and/or anybody from A E W can answer the question, what exactly, not like, but what exactly is the doors and windows that are going to be placed into this senior facility? So now we already know, at least I feel we know, the fund balance by Mr. Walters, and so now we need the other answer, because that was the two objections that were brought up when we were belaboring this last, I'm not going to do it again, ladies and gentlemen, let's just get the answers. So gentlemen, what are the doors and windows going to be, and don't say like Pella, please, thank you.
The metal doors will be D K S models. They, we're not putting any windows in, we're just putting patio doors in, I don't have the information for those currently, I wasn't, they didn't give it to me by the time this meeting took place. But when we say something is this or equal, that is, we give them the opportunity to submit to us an equal representation, we have the right to reject it. So if we say Pella, and they, we said Pella, Marvin, and Anderson, if they come to us with wallside, we have the absolute right to reject that and say, no, we want, we expect a, a, a Pella brand. I don't have the information on which specific one is going to be, but those are three nationally recognized national brands, they're not locals, they're not some fly-by-night operation, they're very similar to each other. I just don't know the specifics of which model they're going to use.
Okay, but does everybody who's involved in this meeting, I know council does, understand that's where the frustration comes in, while I appreciate the two hundred and some odd pages that was submitted to us, I think that's overkill, I, what I, I, when there's certain basic questions asked, I think that, when the basic questions are asked, and we don't get answers to that, that's when all this back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, he said, she said, thing goes on, that's where the breakdown and the communication's happening. So this is where we need to be a little more on top of it, and listen to the specific questions that are being asked, and don't provide all of this extra stuff that we didn't ask for, because that just kind of gums up the process, you know what I mean? So, um, so I'm assuming, Mr. Kelly, from what you just said. So, um, so I'm assuming, Mr. Kelly, from what you just said, those are the only three windows that you would accept. Now, if for some reason this vendor comes in, that we approved the bid tonight, and those doors are not done, what is our ability, I don't know, basically either to, to get them replaced, or I don't, I don't really know what the correct wording is, because I don't do.
Well, what, what they have to do is before they install anything, before they even order anything, they'll submit to us what are called shop drawings and submittals, which is all the information of what they're going to install on the project. And that point, we have the right to say yes or no. This may, this is acceptable and this is not. And we mark those up. So if they came to me and submitted wall side windows to me, I would just immediately reject that. And they, they'd have to go out and find a, you know, model that, that was acceptable. They know what's acceptable. They've already seen what they know is acceptable. So.
David, does that help at all for you or no? Because you're, you know more about this than I do, so I'm deferring to you.
Yeah. You know, as long as we're staying on top of this and we're not going to get, you know, the, the old bait and switch, I, I'm okay with that. But more importantly, I think we also need to, for another day's discussion, look into this bid process and do things quite a bit differently.
Yeah, I, I, I think everybody's right. I mean, the way they explained the door, doors last time are vinyl clad wood, high-performance glass with the argon gas in the middle. And I understand all that, and they seem to be high-performance windows. But, you know, everybody, Nick take note, and AEW take notice. Councilman Calca's got some great points. And I've been up here a long time, and I know you guys for a long time. And we do get a lot of bids from a lot of different people. And, you know, the vendors' jobs are to educate council. Give them the information they need to make the best decisions possible. I think you could have put that door on one piece of paper, explained exactly what it was and the things that were going to be done. And in ten sheets, you probably could have had this whole thing done. So it's, remember, we have all different personalities up there with different backgrounds and, and, and I understand a lot of the different things. So make it simple for council. And Nick, you've got to make sure champion these things at the, you know, we're coming for us, and we're not repeating this over and over again. This information was great, and would have been great for the first meeting. And then if any councils were going to, questions were going to be asked, they could have been asked, and we could have made an easier decision. So.
Absolutely. No taking. It's a balance between too much information and not enough.
Right, exactly. Yeah. But as, as Ms. Calca said, there, there should always be like a process. And we keep talking about processes, and I'm glad Amy's on to listen to this, because, you know, we're looking for these processes and, and what to do with these type of things. So. Uh, Councilwoman Bransky.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid as outlined and recommended by AEW. I can't find the language. I'm sorry. But I just want to, I want to approve the, the bid.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have a motion of second. Let me just grab this shit real quick. Okay, we have a motion of second for the seniors housing facility for DS contractors under the guidance of AEW, with a total price of $533,479. Is that good, Amy?
Yes, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any comments or questions on that motion?
I, I want to make one comment. I, uh, my spreadsheet was brought up. That information is just a re-presentation of John's budget. So that was actually his number straight out of the budget process. The $285 was the total budget for repairs and maintenance, not the total, not the budget. It wasn't the fund balance, and it wasn't the project cost for this, for, for the next year. So that included other repairs, cabinets, indoor upgrades, et cetera. So just wanted to point that out. That was actually our budget that we approved at $285. And the, the second point is, I've been watching this, I've been waiting for this for about five, six years. And it's good to see it's happening. It's been waiting too long. I'll, I agree 100% with Ms. Blenky. A lot of our seniors have been patient and waiting. Now we can tell Ray Wojeski that these are actually going to happen, hopefully, cross my fingers. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, the team. And let's go.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Let's go on.
Okay, Member Bransky. Member Blenky.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Calca.
Yes.
Member Lessidge.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawicki.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, thank you. At this time, I'll make a motion going to closed-door session at 7:30, or I'm sorry, 6:35.
Second.
We have a motion second. I need a vote, please.
Okay, Member Bransky.
Yes.
Member Blenky.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Calca.
Yes.
Member Lessidge.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
Member Winawicki.
Yes.
Motion carries. See you in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Do you have everybody on mute, Michelle? So. Oh my god, Mike. Your clothes are smelling.
There you are.
Yep, here I am. Ready or not.
You're right.
Uh huh.
Call meeting back to order at seven oh nine.
Mike, your microphone again is probably not working.
I will call meeting back to order at seven ten PM.
Okay.
Councilwoman Amy Baranski.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to instruct Mr. Greg Meehan to follow through on the directions he provided us in the closed-door session.
Second.
We have a motion of the second. All in favor, roll call votes.
Okay, member. Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blankie.
Yes.
Member Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Calca.
Sorry, Sue. Mrs. Sue.
Yes, sorry.
Member Glessidge.
Yes.
Member Shornak.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Uh, this time I need a motion to adjourn.
Adding big motion to adjourn, yes. I need a motion to adjourn. Yes, second.
A motion to adjourn. Amy, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take the chance, I think, if this is okay, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but this is our actually last public meeting with Mr. O'Neill, I think, so I just wanted to thank him for his service and express our appreciation for his time and then just to indicate that... That, you know, next month I want to have a conversation about having two meetings a month because we have a lot of things we have to discuss coming through. Just wanted to kind of put that out to the residents that we're trying to get rid of these marathon motions or marathon meetings and we're going to discuss ways to do that next month.
And you're right sometimes about marathon motions. No, we had some good conversations and so we'll be trying to move forward on that, Amy.
Perfect.
Anybody else? I say none. Have a great weekend. Good luck with your party.
Don't you have to take participation from the public?
Uh...
Actually... It's actually not on the agenda.
It wasn't on your agenda, but I can't... Is there anybody who would like to leave a comment or a close vote? I say no hands. We see nobody. We see none. Okay, goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight.
Don't we have to do a roll call vote on motion to adjourn?
Usually just wave goodbye lately.
Thumbs up.
What then?